All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 7:01 PM here in the Veterans Room. I call this Joint General Government Town Council Subcommittee Meeting to Order. Agenda item number two, roll call. Counselor Marketti?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Assistant Member Clements?
Present.
Assistant Member Shane?
Present.
And Counselor Ryan, present. All members present. Agenda item number three, I haven't finished the meeting minutes yet. From that meeting, I will have them for the next meeting on May 12th, I think is the next scheduled meeting.
No.
Agenda item number four. Review the proposed job description for the IT Director position and entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
Second.
Do I have a second? Second? All right. The manager is still not in here. One second, everybody.
The schedule that I have here for a salary, it seems like it's cut off. Is that on purpose? From, there's no two. I don't know if that's cut off in purpose or just by accident.
That might have been an accident. Because that doesn't... But once the manager when he gets here...
If I slid it over, there were more numbers. That's why I had another guy.
That's keeping him awake?
No, not keeping him awake anymore. But his brother was open for two weeks, so. Their brother.
Yeah, I know, my paperwork doesn't have the two.
That's essential, you know, that's my only question. I know that Mr. Canoyer was the last guy who had a stipend to be there. Quick. Kind of in the boat at the moment, so. I thought we had a company that would do all this.
No, not all the IT stuff. I think there was certain...
There's some of it being done.
Was Adriana here? Because you can ask her that question.
She's somewhere.
She, yeah, they both were here and then they're both gone now.
Oh, because she's got the, she did the schedule, so you could ask that question.
Oh, look. Can I borrow you for a second, Adriana?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
You're not allowed to sit down.
Just because I can't find the manager.
Oh, he's on his way down.
He's around somewhere.
He's on his way down.
Okay.
But we had a question about the schedule, Adriana.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Who, you're asking, is cut off?
Yeah.
Get the media?
Mister Manager, hello.
We have a productive conversation.
I don't know, but I'm in the middle of the meeting, I'd like to continue. Everybody all settled? Okay. We are on agenda item number four, the IT Director position. There has been a first and second, Mister Manager.
Yes, good evening, thank you, Manager.
Okay.
The position that we're asking the council to approve is a position to fill the vacancy that was created with Mr. Canoyer left. As many of you know, Mr. Canoyer wore several hats here. He was our assessor, he did IT, he did water through a building. IT has become a critical component of every business, every municipality these days. We do use specialized services in some of our other departments, police, fire, and we have looked, combined with the managed service provider that we use for our high-level IT work, that we do need a person essentially boots-on-the-ground, that can handle the day-to-day, working with peripherals and as well be a liaison between our various departments to this various software vendors. It was becoming overwhelming, these are my words, not Mr. Canoyer's, but when there's a question, say from UNIS with the IT folks, we've had to reboot a couple of things recently over their software upgrades. They need somebody in-house who can take over, run the administrative console. If problems happen at the police, fire, they use third-party consultants. The idea would be where we would have one person being able to administer the whole system. For instance, and I don't want to put, I know Ms. Haddock was here on the spot. I went up the other night when we had our MVP meeting and I couldn't tell which Wi-Fi was for the town and for town employees. So the thought process would be is if we had one person, again like we centralized HR, we would have a central IT person that everybody could rely upon. We have certain gear here in-house, we have a firewall, we could do some of that administration. That person would also oversee the setting of our PCs, new employees, part of the onboarding process. So they would also maintain the existing equipment in the building. Fortunately, we can knock on the wood, we haven't had any major service calls. Since Mr. Canoyer has left, we've been working, we have what's, and again, as I refer to as a managed service provider, many towns do. They do remote maintenance of some of our larger servers. They oversee our bulked 365 software. All of our employees do a lot of cloud-based, use a lot of cloud-based applications now. So for every new employee, we have an account with Microsoft. That is administered by our managed service provider. So some of these services could be transitioned back to that individual so that there could be a savings on what we're paying the managed service provider. So the idea is we need to at least replace the functionality that Mr. Canoyer did and bring in the duplication of effort in some of the outline departments. And we do think that it would be difficult to hire somebody or to take somebody currently in-house and pay them the stipend that Mr. Canoyer did, but get that expertise. He essentially grew into the position, over the years as we, as our infrastructure for IT grew, he learned and adapted to it. To take somebody in-house right now and say, could you become our IT Director or Manager, did not seem feasible. And given what we've seen looking at other communities, how they're trying to attract people and the salaries, we thought it would be best to consolidate all of our IT expenditures, put it into one position and have that centralized process. And the job description that we're presenting is one that we looked after. Talking to other municipalities and reviewing theirs, I talked to some IT people in other departments about what it would take and what we would have to put into a job description in order to get somebody that would fulfill that.
All right. Thank you, Mister Manager. Do I have questions from members of the committee? Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this person would be one centralized IT person through the whole town. So that this person would have all the police department, the fire department, DPW. So would the fire department and the police department, would they like eliminate IT people that work on their systems or would they keep them?
So, we got both chiefs here right now and I've talked to each one of them about this as we were looking to do this. Right now, the police chief, he utilizes one of his officers, he pays him a stipend, he does some of the same work, similar in capacity to Mr. Canoyer, he's still a regular police officer, but he also does some of the IT function. And then to supplement that, they use, they have a line item for specialized services. They might use another consultant that handles special needs for their IT. Similarly, I know the fire chief, I don't believe he has a dedicated person in-house. He may have something that can help him time to time, but nobody did, is receiving a stipend. But you have an outside consultant. And so the idea would be to transition over learning from those consultants and then bringing in and also having a homogeneous set of software. Well, obviously, they have different, they have their dispatch and things, but making sure that we're using similar applications for Wi-Fi, similar applications, you know, for some of the basic needs that we have. So, yes.
So they would be able to eliminate their consultants?
That's the goal and that's how we were planning to fund this, by eliminating those specialized services for those individual departments.
All right.
And the library is, I saw this. Oh! Their IT is covered through the Mars, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we have a network and they actually provide a lot of services which we pay for, but I feel that it is worth the amount of money because they're the people who ultimately manage the whole system and we're dealing directly with them. So we have like PC upgrades and stuff like that and any of the security and stuff like that. So we take care of all that. And it's $75 per machine. So it's a D.
But it is in the description that that person would be required to travel to all those different facilities. So it's anticipated that that's what they would be doing.
And then the other question I have is, on my paperwork, this looks like it's cut off. I don't know, it's just if it's not cut off or it says from, is there a to? I don't know, it just looks like it's cut off.
Maybe Mr. Data, he's asking about the salary lines in the building.
It is cut off.
Madam Chair, I do have the schedule one, if that would be helpful. That's all we have in our people.
Yeah, do you want me to just pass over so you could see it or do you want me to make some copies?
Sure. Or you could just say it.
Okay. How far did it go?
It got cut off at from $72,000.
For which one?
For the one.
So from the A-10, the IT?
Yes.
$73,440 to $88,250.
So that's the range, so the $88,250, that would be their final step, or, okay. All right.
Two. Does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Steves?
A follow-up on what Mike was just asking. Do you have a rough guesstimate of how much, how much in consultant costs that we can reduce by doing this? Will it actually pay for the entire job? What close to it?
I think we would cover at least 50% of it from what we have now, my recollection, because I think the stipend was about $15,000 for Mr. Canoyer roughly. And I think the specialized services and some of the stipends and the others were between $10,000 and $15,000 for each of the other two. Right in that ballpark. So we would be covering a little more than 50% right now.
Is there any consideration of having this person also handle IT for the schools? I believe they have some.
Well, we did have an initial conversation in meeting with Dr. Blar. We could, at the moment, we could, they couldn't take on, we talked about that. But there may be a way to share some resources once we get that person in and maybe them being a backup for us, something along those lines. We did, we did have some preliminary discussion about that.
Because I think it seems like that if they're already doing some of their own IT work, and obviously I see our side, the town side needs it too. But it would be nice to see if we can honestly have the entire town and schools have one IT Director actually handling everything that needs to get done so we don't have a duplication.
The only thing that comes into play though is sometimes, I know in the last community I worked in, the town typically works Microsoft in PC-based world and the schools would rely on Apple.
True.
And a lot of businesses. We're not Apple-based. We are PC-based.
And some with Google, but there are different software requirements.
But Google, yes, absolutely.
And then different security requirements. So there can be, like I said, shared resource, but sometimes the different, I didn't know everything we do here.
No, it's why I'm here.
But there are differences, but there may be areas that we can work together.
Does anyone else have any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any Misses of all present? Agenda item number five. Review the proposed job description for the DPW Assistant Engineering Position and entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
Second.
All right, Mister Manager.
So the job description that you have before you this evening is in part response to the discussions that we've had at various subcommittee as well as council meetings about oversight. So the thought process here was we talked with our new HR Director as well as the DPW Director to come up with a position that would address some of the oversight issues. And that is what's before you and I can let you to one of them elaborate. It's not necessarily my area of expertise, but very specific questions about the job description itself where they may be able to fill it.
Do Heather, do you want to speak on it a little bit, or?
Sure. So over the past year, I've heard many times at councils the desire to have additional inspector, town inspector out in the field and doing inspections, especially during construction season. Although I've expressed that obviously this person can't be on every cycle at the same time, there is a need for additional field peop, person out in the field to do, to be checking more on the construction as they're going on and as, especially our smaller construction jobs where we have road opening permits and things of that nature which are quite numerous. So I heard that, brought it to the town manager. I think part of our concern was, well, what would this person do when there wasn't construction season as much and it wasn't as busy? But what we also have going on is our requirements for our MS4 permitting are increasing greatly and there's a lot of data to manage with that, and a lot of programs that need to be started and additional field work even that needs to be done associated with the MS4 permit. And I said this would be the perfect time to marry the two together. You get a person who is very technically oriented and understands construction, but is also very, you know, field-oriented that might have some background and understanding, you know, how storm sewers work and have them start implementing that program. So this person's going to have to be very savvy with data, data management, GIS, and being able to track that because it's, that MS4 side of things is very data-driven of what we have to do for reporting, location-driven, inspection-driven. There's a lot of filling out the inspection forms and making sure that it gets logged in the right place. But also has to be savvy of being willing to get down in the streams and rivers and go into some places for those and do that kind of hands-on field work. And also be savvy in the inspection services for, during our construction, especially related to our street opening permits and our paving projects. So I saw this as getting another person to be able to really be very field-oriented.
All right. Questions, Counselor Steves?
I mean, I think it's definitely needed and I read through the description of this. Like, do you, from your experience, do you find that there are enough of, is enough of a pool of that combination of skills?
I don't know until we try.
Because it does seem like a really disparate group of skills to do, to do the stormwater-related stuff and the road-related stuff. And we need both. And I totally agree with that. Are you aware of anybody who's been trying to, trying to advert, other towns are trying to advertise for people that have a similar skill base?
I would refer that to Adriana. She was doing the research on that and I know she was looking at people that...
It's a lot of civil engineer positions opening right now and it's similar to this position. Actually, very similar to this position. I know we're not the only town. It's a very small group of candidates, but it's not impossible to find someone. We're just going to have to market it appropriately and do outreach to get as most people as possible to look at the job posting. But I don't think it's impossible to get someone to fill this position.
No, I don't think it's impossible.
I think it's doable, we can definitely hire someone for this role, but it's not going to be a quick hire in my case, but some time just because it's a small pool of candidates. And there are other towns that are hiring for the same position, looking for the same type of hire.
Yeah. I will say that there are many towns out there, especially on the stormwater side, looking to do exactly what we're looking at.
Right.
So...
Has there ever a consideration of doing like a joint stormwater person between multiple towns in the neighborhood? It just occurred to me, so.
I haven't heard it from any of our other towns. Our stormwater system is much bigger than any of the other neighboring towns around. The systems that in the region are much smaller than ours. So I don't know that it's as big of a task in all of the towns that it is going to be in ours.
Right.
So I, yeah. I don't, I think that as soon as we start getting into it and seeing more and more of what we're going to have to do and as it grows, you're, you're going to be looking at more and more personnel just for your stormwater.
Which we've talked about all looking for. That doesn't look like too much fun to me.
It's, this is just a start. I mean, some of it is just going to be, you know, we can talk about, you know, technically, our street sweeping is all related to stormwater. So it's just how you look at it. Our catch breaks, we're already doing a lot of stormwater stuff.
True.
It's just, we're going to have to expand on what we're already doing.
Right. Yeah, I get that.
What's that, Counselor?
At the moment, yeah.
Anybody else, Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, through you. I would ask that we take this off in consideration tonight mainly because, I think because of the transition, we're going to add a new DPW Director. I think it's something that we already have two engineers. To add a third engineer, I don't think it's necessary. The Subcommittee last night, the DPW Subcommittee last night agreed that we do need someone to be like a clerk of the works, but not necessarily an engineer. And I think the concern is that if you hire an engineer, then I think they're going to hit a classification where then they're going to, you're going to be adding to their salary. It'll no longer be a $70,000, it will be like a $90,000 salary range. So since we already have two engineers for the town and the next DPW Director will probably be an engineer, having someone who could oversee the roads is one thing, but having someone on the town, a DPW who's an engineer, I think we're going to run into a lot of costs for that. So that's why I would ask that this be at least postponed for now.
Counselor Steves?
I would argue that if we're doing this and we, and this person is doing the job effectively, we could actually reduce costs by not being able to have to do some of the contracted oversight that we are now doing. That's the whole point of doing this. Is that right now, we're paying for lengthy contracts with the engineers, outside engineering firms to oversee these projects, which we voted on a couple of, like a month and a half back, to extend some of these contracts to give them full-time oversight. And those extensions, actually, if I remember, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but we did a couple of them and they were, they added up to more than what this person would be making. If I remember correctly.
Does what the figure exactly was, but. Got it, you're finished. Assistant Member Clements, then Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have not attended DPW meetings, but I had heard that this was coming down the pike, read this information, was quite shocked at the amount of essential functions. Because if anybody reads this, I would have to then say, well, what's the other two engineers doing? Just because there's just so much here. I don't disagree in part with what Counselor Marketti's saying either. I mean, we have two engineers. Is it engineers we need or is it oversight? Is it other people who have experience in road construction and various components of the job versus engineers? Can our two in-house engineers handle the MS4 stuff and somebody who's not necessarily an engineer, but has lots of other DPW experiences and such, or other construction-type experience be enough for us? Does it have to be an engineer? That being said, I'm kind of shocked at the salary as being what it is. Looking at the IT Director salary, which I wanted to mention, I just kind of let it go until we got to here, being as high as that is compared to what you expect this engineer at $67,000 to be doing here. Which begs the question, what is our assistant, our DPW Director now? What is his salary up to? Because I didn't have the budget in front of me to look at that when I, I didn't have the full budget book. So I wasn't sure. Just in comparison, from my own knowledge. Where is, where is he up to? And we know, you know, and what's our next DPW Director, you know, what's the ad going to look like for that in terms of what we're putting out there for getting a qualified DPW Director with an engineer in it? Those are all questions that sort of are entangled amongst each other when it comes to funding the position or fund, and the need. And I would have to say that while Counselor Steves said this is a person that we need because we're spending all this money on oversight, you're absolutely right. We spend an awful lot of money on supervisor oversight and we get a mess like on Main Street. And we wonder what happened to that. And I don't think our problem is that we're not spending enough on supervisor oversight or whatever, site managers or whatever they call it in the contract. The problem we have is our enforcing what they didn't do and leaving us in a mess. I think that's part of the problem we've had all along. Is when we have something like the Center Street parking lot that has cracked sidewalks within the first year or so and it's brought to people's attention and, you know, did it get fixed? Have they been fixed? I'm not really sure, I got to go look again. But, so it's not so much, you know, we have these people that are hired through our, through our contracts to do the oversight, then they do their job wrong and then we don't make anybody accountable. That's an in-house problem. So hopefully, we have somebody who, who can make those people accountable. I just beg to differ that this one person, this one $67,000 person who has everything on their plate here, I'm not sure what's left, is not going to get to do all this. If you've got four projects going on, how accurate are they going to be for oversight to every single project? It was even, the DPW Director just said that, that they can't be at every project in making sure that every single thing is done. At the end of the day, when the construction stops, did that person get a chance to look at the work that was done for that day before the next work starts and that the first day was wrong and then it just gets worse, does it? So there's a lot of things to consider in this position or in, in our makeup, in our DPW makeup. Do we have what we need administratively, oversight-wise and all in general in the DPW at this point? With changing of the DPW Director and all, do we actually, do we have what we need and are we using our, the taxpayers' money wisely in paying for these positions? I don't know.
Well, that's, that's something that I think we've been talking about off and on for like the last two or even three years now.
Probably longer than that. But nothing gets done about it, so I'm just saying it because I'm here today.
Focus on, and the DPW has not had the focus of this.
We do have a line of people, so if we can just try to keep it to whoever has the floor, please.
I'm good for now, that's, oh, I think I said a lot.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Marketti?
I'm going to yield so a lot of people can talk.
Go ahead, then.
Thank you.
Could you just identify yourself on the record, please?
Derek Julian says a member of PPP, 331 High Street. So I am one of the gentlemen that proposed that we needed oversight. I've spoken with Heather, I've spoken with the town manager, I've spoken at the DPW Subcommittee meetings. An assistant engineer is not what we need. Because I know in past precedents, past precedents, it's happened in this town, is that you hire somebody with a specific title and when they get past their grace period, oh, they're out of their range of pay now. So now we have to give them a raise. This, this job description does not need to have an engineer. This job description only requires somebody that has had multiple years' experience with roads and drainage. The water and sewer, they inspect their own. I do work in this town. The water department inspects their own water connections. The sewer department inspects their own connections. Why are we taking that away from them? Why are we throwing it on somebody else? They do it now, why can't they keep doing it? The other jobs that are in here, I agree with. We don't need somebody that has the title of engineer. Someone with a construction background like myself or, because a few others in this room, they have it. And they have multiple years in it. They could do all of these things. Maybe not the AutoCAD software as fluent as somebody else that has the experience in that, but that's something you learn.
Or the other engineers.
This, this title just can't be. And you don't have to, I mean, the pay rate is, is in the ballpark, it really is. It is. It doesn't need to be higher. But this title just, I see false things happening with this all the way. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments or questions from people?
Just as a, could I say, so I don't, I think the number, you're correct. The ball, the number of the salary for someone to do this job looks right, but not as an engineer, not an engineer. You know, but I do agree that for, for what's being required, that's not a bad number. It's just, as an engineer, they're going to want, they're going to want more. The title is going to bring in more, which is what it is.
Heather, Martina, then Goss. Oh, Counselor Steves, excuse me.
I, I just want to say, I don't believe this person has to be an engineer. I think this person could be an engineer. I think this could, person that could be somebody that is very familiar with doing construction, has been in the construction field and has done some type of oversight-type reporting. and has done some type of oversight-type reporting, and has familiarity with drainage. I think the reason, just to, I don't want to, I'm not going to nitpick in this thing, but I think the reason the water and sewer connections are included in here is that the water and sewer department inspect their own connections, but they don't inspect the paving job afterwards. So they will still be, a person who is, we're doing the road opening permits, someone still has to go back and inspect the paving.
Okay, but that says the connections.
It was meant to be the paving after the connections.
That's what I'm standing for.
So, just, just as a, sorry. So I, too, think you could find someone who has years of experience, that maybe is very technical-related, and maybe doesn't have an engineering degree. I know plenty of people that have been in construction that are extremely knowledgeable and can do this. I also know special, plenty of engineers that are clerk of the works. So just to say you need a clerk of the works, most big clerk of works are engineers. So, that's where you get, I, I think there's some mixed signals of there. You know, there are different types of engineers, field inspecting engineers, people that have been in the field and running construction jobs and big construction jobs. There's a lot of engineers who do that. And there's a lot of job superintendents that aren't engineers that have done that. But, it's, that's why maybe we need to make it a little more generalized, and maybe we can reach a wider pool of people.
Such as an oversight, some.
Well, yeah, just, so, great. I just don't, yeah, I just don't know, you have somebody doing oversight, you're not going to have a lot of winter work. So that was part of the idea, was to do some of the semis for work in the winter.
If that's an assistant to the resident engineer, that wouldn't be bad, but it just can't give that guy the title engineer. Because that just opens the door for.
Okay. All right, construction oversight.
Well. I, I need a, I. No, I, I think, uh, Martina and then Counselor Sees, yes, you're right.
Let Counselor Sees go first. My question is more second.
Okay, okay. Well, my observation is, I just think a couple of things. First off, if, if we were going to do that more general kind of a description, uh, in the, 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 the job description refers to, and field resident engineer, it refers to bachelor's degree in civil engineering or related field, it's desired, related engineering experience in design, blah, blah, blah. Um, this, I mean, refers to engineering all over the place. And what do you, I guess, this is due to either Heather or the manager or both, or, or you? Where, how would you, how would you rephrase it in such a way that we get the, the kind of coverage that we actually need to have?
Why don't we just postpone it?
And the professionalism that we need to have without, because we, because we need to get this done. And, uh, and we keep, we keep, we keep kicking the can down the road with some of these things, and we keep, it keep costing us on various projects. And, and the, we've been talking about upgrading the capacities of DPW for years now, and it keeps getting piecemealed. We need to stop doing that. And start giving the, the DPW the capacities that it needs to have. We keep dilly-dallying.
Okay, so, Mr. Julian, Counselor Adams. Oh, you do have a question, okay.
That was the question, is what, 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 what should this be in such a way that, that it makes sure that we get the, the requirements and the qualities that we need this person to have, to do the jobs that we need this person to have?
Okay. Heather or the Mr. Manager, since the question was directed to you, do you have an answer to that?
Given the discussion that we've been having.
I confess I don't have much to add to, to, in the way of a response. I mean, we were trying to be responsive to everything that we heard, Subcommittee and Counselor.
And I appreciate that.
I've had experience in many different things, but roadwork and civil engineering is not my forte. So, I did talk to Ms. Blakely about, you know, and Ms. Ravenna about, could we create something that would cover this? And so this essentially is our first stab at this, to present something to you and put something into the budget to address this. So, I'm going to have to defer to Ms. Blakely with her background and expertise as to how we would tailor this to satisfy what everybody's talking here. I can't.
I guess, I don't understand how, what you just said doesn't already say what I just said. Because it says bachelor's degree in engineering or related field is desired. So related. Required, it's desired. It's desired, and it says related field, or, or, and maybe we should say, and/or construction experience. I, it's, it's not required, it's desired. It's basically saying, we want somebody who's been out there either designing or constructing, they're out in the field for three to eight years, actually doing hands-on stuff. That's what that's saying to me.
Well, it does say specific desire in construction of public works.
Yeah, it was a requirement that the job description would say as required, but it's desired or preferred. That doesn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't consider someone that has the experience. And it says, or a proven combination of education, training, and experience.
Yeah.
If you wanted to put the word "construction experience" in there somewhere, I, I guess that could be an adder. That's the only thing I could add to it, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because I think it is general, I think it is trying to open, it's trying to find somebody who has field-related experience.
Yeah.
Because it's coming to this Subcommittee, not ours.
Okay, so I will now go into Mr. Julian, and then Ms. Shay, and then Ms. Clements. And, oh yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Adams.
It's all right, I'll wait till the last.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of hands and a lot of discussion. If we can try to keep the sidebar discussions to a minimum and not talk over each other, it'd be really helpful. Okay.
Just one thing that I want to say before I forget. The way Mass DOT does it, is you have a CE1, a CE2, a CE3 civil engineers. Underneath them, they have their gentleman that they send out, they call it GCIs, the General Construction Inspectors. They're not engineers. They don't get paid the big dollars like the engineers do, but that's where Mass DOT does it. They have multiple people underneath their resident, uh, civil engineers. They go out and do the inspections for them, while the engineers are in the house doing what they need to do for plans and everything else.
All right, thank you. Ms. Shay?
Counselor Marketti suggested that we, as Counselor Gus said, we kick this down the road. We're talking about the budget number right now. And I understand we have to have the job description to go with the budget number, but if we don't put the budget number in now, June 1st is going to come real fast.
No, this is no, to be, no, hold on.
We voted the budget number last night.
We vote, okay, the, the budget number's okay.
Please do not speak unless you are recognized, please. I've said that multiple times, please. Yes, we're talking about the job description at this point, not the budget number. That is the agenda item we are talking about.
All right, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Assistant Member Clements?
Thanks. Yes, I was going to say, you have the number. It's not the number, it's the issue here. So obviously, title is, you can't say assistant engineer if that's not what you're really looking for. If you're looking for something else that doesn't necessarily be an engineer, you do have to at least change that. And there are some things, one thing that jumps out, the three to eight years, that's a really wide. Uh, I would imagine, in this type of job, you would want somebody probably a minimum of five years. I mean, three years of construction is not much. Anybody could say they worked three years with, as a, you know, an apprentice to somebody, and that's just not a whole lot when it comes to what you're asking them to do here. Because they could sell you good in their, their interview, and it might look right. But, um, I, I would prefer that the years be different, but that's just, again, my, my preference, and I'm not the professional here to decide that. Because you can still also have a bachelor's degree in something, and still, without that experience, the piece of paper just means you did your test really good. And you didn't actually have the experience. So it would be nice to see that it's not, that it's a little, that, you know, maybe it's five to eight, or something like that, over five, or whatever, something more to the long, longer side than the shorter side. Because that's what really gets you in this industry, is the time you've spent on the job.
True.
I know some super, super highly-paid professional people, work in Connecticut, actually, down there for construction companies, that never went to college and are top in their field, and they're not engineers or all, and they get paid really big money. But I'm just, and they do all the roadwork stuff. But, uh, so I'm just saying, it is about the experience, more so than just about anything else. You do need, you do need, you know, you do need to know something going into this, but, um, the experience is what's gonna, it's going to help this town, I think. I think that's, more experience is going to help Southbridge, so. I, I think, I don't think waiting a week, or, you know, getting it tightened up and bringing it back one time to, to whatever it is, or getting it to the, getting it to the members as soon as possible, even if a meeting isn't for two weeks, get, get it so everybody can digest it. Ask questions. People, nothing for, ever tells a, a member of a committee or any other counselor that they can't, you know, question something prior to a meeting. So that the person who's presenting this has the ability to come prepared, come with those questions already been answered, perhaps. So, you know, maybe they can get it out sooner, and there's, there's plenty of time for somebody to just say, hey, did you consider something? And maybe they won't change a thing, but they'll come with the finalized document, and that might be what you accept. Just a suggestion. I think it, it would be prudent to get it right, and not to keep trying to figure it out as we talk like this.
All right. Counselor Adams and Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I, I appreciate them putting the gray words in there, not black and white. I, I don't see a need to continue to delay this. They can work on a little bit and tighten it up just a little bit, or whatever they may be, based on some of the recommendations that are in here. Bring it to the Town Council, I believe it's on May 9th, and let the Town Council make that decision. Obviously, the J. Guff can come up with a rec- negative recommendation, but that's, that would be up to the vote here. But, I, if you want to get rid of the word engineer, because you don't like that word, fine, I, I don't care. But if it's somebody that's able to look at the construction, the multiple construction sites that we have going on, is able to feasibly and educationally take care of the problem and supervise, um, the, the works that are happening, you know, great, but in here, it specifically states requirements. And requirements are big gray words in there, and that's good. We do that with the town manager's job, fire chief's job, a few other jobs around here, and, and I don't understand why, the perfection is on the eye of the beholder. So at this point in time, I say, recommend move it up to the Town Council, even if it's a negative recommendation. Let the staff work it out, maybe ask some questions from some of the counselors and citizen members here or residents that are giving recommendations, and tighten it up a little bit and see if we can work this thing out at the Town Council meeting. It's not that difficult. We can do two things at once. Thank you.
I will, I'm, the only thing that I, I will say, we can get the, there's still time, and we have a meeting scheduled before the budget is to be adopted, and before all these final numbers are supposed to be accepted, too. So we still have some time to really beat out the, have one more meeting. We have a meeting scheduled on May 12th down here. So we could have that debate down here, again, with the final description that this committee might be more comfortable with, and then move it up to the May 23rd meeting. And we can just have it on the May 23rd meeting agenda as well. Would that also work?
That's it. I'll make a motion to postpone until the description is, to, is, is a little more accurate.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussions on the motion and second to postpone? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Record is four to one. The remaining, the motion is postponed, um, the agenda item is postponed until?
Madam Chair?
I was just going to ask, Madam Chair, if I could just say, if there were people, I, I do have Mr. Julian's email address. I don't remember, so, Mr. Julian, you express it. If those folks who had some suggestions this evening wanted to send them to me or Ms. Ravenna, we can try and incorporate that and work with Ms. Blakely to, to address what was discussed this evening.
Full disclosure, I'm out of town on the 12th, I don't know who's here.
Okay.
But I will, I would like, if I could see it, I will put it in my comments. Well, I've done that before. I call him.
You could, you could, we could have a discussion. All right.
I will break into my vacation.
All right, so we will now move on to agenda item number six. Review and discuss the addition of grade A10 to salary schedule one for the IT director position, and entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for approval. All right, this is pretty self-explanatory. This is just, this is a scheduled salary for the job description we just recommended to bring up to council. Is there any further discussion on the, on this?
It's just a quick question on, um, what your thoughts were in terms of why you, why you gave this particular job this salary.
That, I can defer a little bit to Ms. Ravenna, but I did take some time to speak to some towns around us to see what they were paying for, not necessarily, um, we call this IT director, but we're not, it's not the same level as some other towns are paying over six figures. This would be our director here, but not the true network administriator. It's going to be somebody who has some experience, but also health desk, um, but that seemed to be the going rate when I talked, uh, to our peers. And I don't know, we did monitor a lot of the other job openings that are out there across the Commonwealth. As I've said before, there are an awful lot of jobs in the municipal government right now. So we, we looked, you know, they, they run the gamut, you know, if you're closer to Boston, they may be paying higher. But we, we spoke, I spoke to Southborough, I spoke to Webster, I spoke to a couple of people just to get some ideas, what, what something commensurate to attract somebody with that skill level here. I did that on my own, and I know Ms. Ravenna did something.
Is that, is that the normal rate for an IT director, a normal range for the IT director, based on HR practices?
It's kind of midpoint. Um, there, as, as Town Manager mentioned, as you go to the cities, they're higher. Obviously, it's a bigger budget, so they're paying more. I actually have a spreadsheet I did, a salary survey, just to make sure that we were aligned or competitive enough at least with our surrounding towns, and we are.
Okay.
I can provide that with, with that information. And if you have any questions prior to the meeting that you want to ask me, please send me an email, and I can have time to prepare and respond.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous of all present. I recommend that we postpone agenda item number seven until the updated job description for the DPW assistant engineer in position is finished. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Is postponed. All right, the big item, agenda item number eight. Review the Town Manager's five-year capital plan fiscal year '23 through '28, and entertain a motion to submit to Town Council as presented. Do I have a second? I figured we would go through by fiscal year '23 and go by section. I figured that'd be the easiest way to go through this, and if people have questions on that particular section, you raise your hand, okay? Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, if I could, by the way, brief introduction. So, we've tried a different format this year. While we didn't have explicit discussion about the exact format, Counselor Marketti had an ad hoc Subcommittee with regard to capital planning. We met several times, and we looked at, um, some requirements for the capital plan, what other towns were doing, including some other formats, the sheet that each department submits. We looked at what some of the towns were doing, so I tried to model it after some of the things we looked at in that committee, and the overall format, so that we could try and get it on one page rather than the format that was used previously. This format that I used here for this year, and obviously, it's our first year, we can, we can play with it. I originally tried to put in some of the prior year's expenses so that we could see. I took that out because it became rather cumbersome. But what I did at the top to make it readable was to put category codes, what the nature of, of the, the item was. So on your left hand, immediate left hand, you see CC, that's category code. So it's broken down by whether it's facility construction, facility renovation, parks, open space, infrastructure vehicles, and miscellaneous. Similarly, next to each fiscal year column, you have the amount that's been requested, and then you have a funding source, which is the revenue code, for property tax, general fund, state or federal aid, sale of land, a pilot, water sewer bond, other retained earnings, special revenue, capital stabilization, building maintenance, and we put a placeholder for ARPA. Now, I would say the one caveat, and we'll get to it when we get down into the DPW. When we started, I sent out capital requests back in September, and it asked people to update them all along. We started to incorporate them. At that point in time, we were operating under the federal interim rule with regard to how ARPA was being spent. with regard to how ARPA was being spent, and the primary focus of the interim rule was solely on infrastructure. So we did put a lot of ARPA funds into some of these categories. Now, as you may know, or many of you may know, the council has an ad hoc committee looking at how to use the ARPA in line of the new final rule, which gives us broader discretion on how to use these funds. So as we go through, we may have to modify the funding sources where some of these were ARPA. If we're going to use ARPA for other community needs, now we may have to change these to be water sewer bond or perhaps stabilization. So given the limitations of the version of Excel that we have, if there's a single funding code at the very last page, you will see there are totals. And the grand totals will tell you how much was requested. And you have then a grand total by allocation, which each section, general government, police, it'll tell you what this total amount was requested. Grand total by source will tell you what funding source is being utilized. So essentially, in fiscal year, there was $27 million in requests, but we're only going to be, we put funding sources for the $19 million. In the interest of time, as we were trying to get this new format in, we didn't come up with three separate capital budgets. So I did break out water and sewer enterprise at the bottom. So the number represents, before we had three separate sections, this is a combined capital budget where you have before, again, it's a work in progress. I was trying to be responsive again to the council as well as the subcommittee's request for something that was a little more readable. So I would just respectfully request your patience and indulgence as we go through this, and we can make corrections as we talk about the other. I did show this to Councillor Marquetti, this proposed format, right before we started finalizing the capital budget. So again, work in progress. Welcome any input. And we're trying to make it so that it's much more readable and clear where the money's going and all in one page as opposed to several pages out and several pages down.
All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Manager? If we're all ready, I figure we'll just go through by subsection, and we'll start with the Town Hall subsection. Does any members of the committee or the public have questions or comments about the Town Hall section of the capital budget? Councillor Steves?
Thank you. Two quick things. One is that I'm aware, in the past, I've mentioned about the idea of the potential of looking for historical commission grants to do Town Hall renovations. Has that gone anywhere?
As time permits, I have started to try and look into that because we are on a, I believe, the Massachusetts Historic Register for the building because of the nature of it. So I have tried to look into it. I don't have anything to report to you for this fiscal year.
And also, the list, I notice, doesn't include the windows. I know it's been an issue too.
So what I did was I ported over a lot of the requests from the previous format into this. And so whatever was in the future, the last year's FY '23 came in. The windows, and they've been an oversight on my part. I know that we do need to address some of the windows, especially the plexiglass up there, and I incorporated any new items in there.
I know, like a lot of these are in canteup shapes.
Any other, do you have any other questions? Anybody? Councillor Marquetti?
Thank you. Through you. So the communications center tower, $100,000. So is that the tower across the street or where does that mean is that?
So, yeah. So does it fall into Town Hall? No.
That's not. It says general government. I thought that's what we were.
No, I'm doing it by subsection, so in case. All right. Any other questions about Town Hall? Seeing none, we move on to information technology. Oh wait, you have another one?
Yeah, although it's listed as FY '24, I was curious about, because it looks like you're talking about during architectural design of interiors in basement, and then it jumps down to FY '24, 1.5 million for updating use of the basement and reconfiguration of space. Just what are your thoughts on that? I mean, we do have a bunch of space, and that is not even being used.
One thing, you know, we do have certain needs restored. I can tell you when we created the new office space, we are running out of storage space. We're required to retain a lot of municipal documents. We have more coming in the building. One of the things, not again, professional by any means, but all one has to do is walk into some of that area and damp. We're going to have to do something about that. That number was one that I carried forward, but I think we should take some time, investigate that. You know, Ms. Blakely is leaving, perhaps, and we can task that new person, he or she who comes in, with helping to come up with a plan to better utilize that space. And even if it's not used for Town Hall employees, perhaps it can be other meeting space for community organizations. But I do think it's not a real situation, a deal location at the moment for some of our paper documents. And there are, I was surprised, I went on a tour, I want to say one with Mr. Pelletier, and I think one with Mr. Conoyer. There are a lot more documents down there than I was aware of in other sections. And one of the other Town Halls I worked in, they put a lot of money into climate control, dehumidifying and things to preserve, because we have a lot of historically significant documents here in the Town Hall. We want to ensure that anything that may be down there is not compromised. So I do think it's something worthwhile. I don't know if 1.5 million dollars, I haven't looked that far. I will be honest, we reported that here.
All right. Seeing no further discussion on Town Hall, information technology. Councillor Marquetti, I know you have a question on this.
Yeah, I just was asking about the communications center tower.
That was that one we discussed at the OPERA meeting, and I put an official request in for the police station to be upgraded with a cellular, not cellular, excuse me, a radio communications tower to be attached to the side of the building. That was a rough estimated cost of $100,000. I see it's OPERA funded. I had to blow mine up on the phone and see.
Yes, it is.
It's one of the proposals in the back, Councillor Marquetti.
But it's not a OPERA one.
No, it's not.
It's listed as it would be coming out of.
Out of the free cash or property tax.
Property tax free cash.
Okay, so that A does not mean like?
No, A means property tax, free cash and overlay.
At the top that you see the?
There's a revenue code right at the top of the sheet. Right. Do you have any further questions, Councillor Marquetti? Okay. Does anybody else have any further questions on information technology? Seeing none. We move on to inspections. Anybody having questions about inspections? Councillor Marquetti?
100 gallon stainless steel prover.
I just request, my coach.
Yes.
I'm going to request it to be pulled from the CIP. Reason being, I had originally planned to use the trailer that we have to mount this onto. And between the time I put in for the prover and had a chance to inspect the trailer, the trailer is no longer. These are pictures of the current trailer with the prover on it. They are, it's a 1938 trailer. The, I need to, I'm going to come forth again next year with this request, but it's a 1938 trailer. We don't know if anything ever goes wrong with this trailer, if we can even get the bearings, another axle, anything like that. It's showing extensive wear. We need the equipment because the state is no longer going to certify this prover. 100 gallon prover is used when we're doing the oil trucks. We pump up 100 gallons into this prover. It tells us exactly within 2% is a gallon, a gallon, and then we have to pump it back into the oil trucks. It's outlived its ability to still perform. It's stainless steel. The state doesn't want to, not stainless steel, it's regular steel. The state doesn't want to prove regular steel anymore because it delaminates and it loses its accuracy. Also, you get contaminants in the product. So the price of this thing is actually going to be closer to $40,000. I got a quote of 35, but next year I'm giving a possible increase. I will be back next year with a request for this because we do need it, but I am not prepared to give you a full package right now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. So that will have that, we have to back to council. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
All right. One quick question.
Yes.
We're regarding bladed buildings. I know we're not, we don't have a line in for this year, but how much do we currently have in that account?
That would have to defer to Karen.
And the bladed buildings account? How much do we have in there? I know it comes up every once in a while.
There's less than $500,000, I believe, but we still have a significant amount. We'll get through this year with it easy enough. We will probably get through a couple of years easy enough. If I take down two buildings a year at 80 to 100,000 per building, we should be able to go through. This year, I have two on target, and next year I'll target two others, and I'll try to get the others, anything else on receivership that we can get worth running through.
All right. We will now, any other questions for inspections? Seeing none, we move on to miscellaneous buildings. Anybody have any questions about that? Councillor Marquetti?
Thank you. Through you. The animal kennel. This has been, I thought we had this ready to go last year, so I don't understand why it's not in this year.
If I could, I don't know why it's 250,000 in the capital plan.
That's me. I put it in thinking that, well, because BAPAT, then that's my misunderstanding because I knew it was on the previous year. We didn't get it done with BAPAT, so I was carrying it forward as a project that was yet to be completed. And I put it in because we were going to do it primarily with donations and things.
Because that was, that was my mistake.
Well, it's my mistake too. But we do talk about the dog kennel all the time, so we're trying to get McLaurin Engineering to get our.
Well, if I could, Madam Chair, we have an email thread going on now for about eight months between the Town Manager, DPW Director, myself, and the Engineer and Congress. They've never experienced anything like it. They're going to get back to us. They give us dates, we give them deadlines. They're going to get back to us. This has been going on since last year. You're right, Councillor Marquetti. So at this point, you know, we were promised by April, I think it was 26th, we were going to have a final design and put it out to bid, get it ready for the summer, and here we are today. So it's two days past. The due date would be right now.
That's why I carried.
Did you pay them to know for that?
But I would suggest that we convene, if we could discuss that further, if we're possibly going in on a direction. But because it's just, I don't know if it's ever going to happen.
No, if it was my understanding, it's all BAPAT has to be handling it with their programming. With BAPAT handling it in its entirety. So we're not paying out of our free cash, so there's no need for it to be on the capital budget, right? Or out of?
But it's just to show that we're doing capital projects.
Because we're not funding it, it's already been funded, right?
We have donations.
We have a substantial amount, probably about 250,000 in donations and other. This council has vogue in the past that that'll take money for capital projects. That's just saying, it's not been spent yet. So I'm not sure if this needs to be on there. You can tell me.
Again, experimental, and some towns want to track all their projects even once it's paid for by donation. So if we don't want to do that going forward, that's fine.
I don't think it's bad here.
Yeah, no, as long as it's explained that we're not, we don't have to find them.
So it doesn't disappear from people's minds. And it says G, it says other, so it's not coming out of anybody's.
I'd like to see it get built.
All right. Do we have any other questions on miscellaneous buildings? Seeing none. We move on to police. Do we have any questions or comments about the police capital budget? Councillor Marquetti?
So you need two patrol cars again this year?
Correct.
Is there something wrong with the other ones?
No, through you, Madam Chair, what we do is we get rid of the two old skies of the fleet. Right now, we have two that are a little bit over 100,000 on each, so we cycle them out. They go to the junkyard, we bring two new cars and we do whatever we have.
So there's something wrong with them or just?
A police vehicle should not be driven on patrol every day at more than 100,000 miles. It's a standard in the industry. We're trying to go to hybrids, save gas cost, fuel costs along. That's what these vehicles would be. And these vehicles, since we're talking about them, I was told two days ago by Ford, there's about 30 week, we're about 30 weeks out on these. If we wanted them July 1st, it'd be 30 weeks till we get these Ford interceptors. So the pictures that you have, just for a point of clarification, I'm going to get whatever we can get to put them in the fleet. So it might be a Dodge Durango, it might be a Ford SUV, but it's going to be two vehicles going on the fleet, whichever I can get first. If we go with the standard that you're looking at now in front of you, it's going to be 30 weeks from July 1st. So we wouldn't have them for more than a year, or almost a year, I should say. But if I can get some other type of interceptor vehicle to go into our fleet sooner than that, that's the direction I'd like to know.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a hybrid?
I'm going to go where I can to get a hybrid, but right now I'm being told 30 weeks out. Not only that, I'm just another point of clarity, either hybrid or regular gas, they're both 30 weeks out. And everybody blames the pandemic. That's over now, so I don't know.
All right, so Assistant Emma Clemmons?
So in your description, it lists them out as the funding request of $60,000 each, and here the funding request is $130,000. And in your description, it says that you're applying for grants of $5,000 in savings for the purchase of each hybrid. That could result in 15, which doesn't make sense if it's two cars. That'd be 10,000. But if I add five and five. So what's the number? Is it 130? Is it 120? Is it?
I don't know. The document I have in front of me is one, it's 130,000. It'd be 60 for the car, give or take, for the equipment, the mobile data terminal needs to go in, the mount, the rifle rack, just other equipment that doesn't come with the vehicle, the radio. So a completely unfit car, a cruiser, is 65,000. If it's a hybrid, and I don't know what you're not understanding, but we get $5,000 back from the car, for 10,000 for both, on a state grant for hybrid vehicles, if it's a hybrid. But I don't know if I'm going to be able to get our hands on a hybrid within another year.
So Chief, what I'm saying is, in the paperwork, you're requesting 130,000 according to this. In the description you sent to us, or somebody did, page, I don't know, in the back of the book, it just says estimated funding request is 60, and that you're going for 5,000 in savings. I'm just asking the bottom line. Is it 60 plus 60, which is 120, or is it some other number? That's all.
It's 65 plus 65.
Okay, that's just not what the paper said. That's all I'm saying. I was just trying to clarify, so yes. That's why I'm asking. It wasn't fictitious. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
I just wanted to add that the conversation earlier about the vehicles, I'm in charge of fleet maintenance and other, or oversight in other past positions. And I will say, when I worked with police and fire vehicles, especially police vehicles, a lot of people say 100,000, that seems awfully low because, you know, you, a lot of cars, especially small Hyundai's, Toyota's, Hondas, you get 150,000 easily. It's not always what's on the odometer. There's actually a separate reading that monitors engine hours because a lot of times these cars are running 24/7, 365. So it may have 100,000 on it, but there's a factor that you multiply by the engine hour, and they could actually have the equivalent of 300,000 or more on them. And really what happens is, at that point in time, they tend to break down. And I've seen this in the police departments, they get rid of them right around this time because usually you have catastrophic failures with your water pumps. You start throwing a rod, you're ruining an engine, and then it becomes a nightmare. So it's not unusual for them to trade them out at about 100,000 in what's on the chief's.
Just to, again, not to, but extra 1,000 miles engine wear, that's what we're at right now. With the two vehicles in our fleet, 100,000, extra 1,000. They're going 100,000 miles, 300,000 miles on the engine because they're running, they're operating 24/7. So that's just a typical.
Chief, if I may, if you don't get the hybrids, do you expect that this number could go down? Because I know that gas, I realize all cars are expensive now, I know that. But is there a chance that that could go down if you end up with the gas-powered vehicle?
The difference through you, Madam Chair, is approximately, it's about $5,000 difference with the hybrid. And the reason why the state is doing that $5,000 matching grant is because that's the difference to offset from gas to hybrid. So if we don't get the hybrid, we won't get the grant, so it's going to be the same money anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councillor Steves?
Yeah, I was curious if, I think I brought this up last year too. Have we taken any idea of looking at doing either smaller vehicles or all-electric? Especially since we're putting in electric, supposed to be putting in electric charging facilities in town, if that's going to happen. I don't know whether that's.
All right, Mr. Chief?
As far as the electric, I would love to go all electric today. But right now, Ford, it's, it's not a cost doable for us. Maybe next year. We're hearing some rumors in the law enforcement community, they're going to have a fully electric police vehicle within another year. So I would do that if it's cost effective for the community. Besides, we can't go any less. We have cages in these vehicle transport prisons. We have rifles. We have equipment. We have a bunch of other equipment, CPR, you know, everything you can possibly imagine, wheels to measure accidents, cruiser bags, so many different components. We couldn't go to a small vehicle. Even the sedans that they have, the interceptors, the sedans, they're too small. You can't fit them in. When you put a cage in them, it takes, it shrinks all the space. The cages, it's kind of awkward. You can't get prisons in and out. The interceptor, the SUVs are the best, in my opinion, and they're pretty much a standard in the industry. No one really goes to smaller cars unless they're lobby departments where they have funding in place to go electric and they use it for community vehicles. They go out, they park them, they leave on Main Street foot patrols. Ours are in service, operating every day, transporting people every single day. So we need a bigger, a little bit bigger vehicle.
The other point that we, we looked at is that with the all-electric technology right now, they don't support our mobile radios, computer systems and things at this point. They have to run off the 12-volt system, not the vehicle system. So they haven't gotten through those things yet.
I'll say. I know it's, I have said this for a member of years. And the chief has said it, two is not enough. Really, we should be replacing them at three a year, correct?
Yes.
So it, it still continues to be my position that we need to be replacing them at a quicker rate and finding a way to do so. One in the budget, two in the capital ultimately, optimally, in my opinion. That's just all I have to say on that. Any other discussions on the police budget or the police capital budget? Councilor McKee.
So my only, my only opinion is if there's, if there's nothing wrong with the vehicles, then I don't see anything wrong with continuing to, to use them. But if you're going to get the vehicles, you're going to get the vehicles. I'm sure the council's going to know a lot of it. I just, I look at it and say, you know, if they're still drivable, then keep driving them. The other thing I wanted to know about was the pavement, $80,000. You're planning on doing what, complete paving of the whole thing?
Yeah, for you, Matt, Jim, the parking lot, if you look behind our building, it's like cut in half. We would only be doing one half of that parking lot. And even now, with the recent events, Europe asphalt's gone sky high, so I don't even know if this is going to cover it anymore. I've gotten, I got a few prices or quotes, I should say, estimates prior to this submission, but I don't know what that's going to be when I try to get it, you know, after July 1st. This is proof. I have to come back to the council, talk to the manager, see what's going on. But I love price units for half that parking lot. It went into 1997. You can see from the pictures, you know, come down, take a look, it's getting a little spotty back there, especially in the winter. When the, the puddle, we get ice in them, we fill them. DPW's been kind enough to fill them for us. But they, you know, there's just so much traffic on it that they, that just breaks away quickly.
We should seal ice.
I was going to say, I shouldn't even say puddles in this community.
That's all we have. Thank you.
This summer, there's swimming pools.
Are there any other questions about the police budget? Seeing none, we will move on to the fire capital budget. Do we have any questions about the fire capital budget? Councilor McKee.
Thank you. Through you. So first of all, the administrative vehicle, that's not about.
So as you know, I all compare. Give you a little description of all of the, of the projects that I have listed here for this year only.
Obviously, the previous, the next couple of years, you can, we can talk about those, but all, all, all of those are very large purchase items.
Not that we can share the rest of them. But pretty much this is. So definitely, the administration vehicles have always been a topic when we go to get one. Each of the vehicles that we have, mine was replaced in 2020. So we're a good 10 to 12 years before having to replace that one. This one that I have budgeted for right now is for replacement of the 2003-13 Expedition. It has 90,000 miles on it. As you see in the descriptions, I don't want to go through the whole thing. It gives you a few minutes to read it, but like Chief Woodson said, these vehicles carry multiple things for the fire department, CBA, for the firefighter that's assigned to that vehicle, fire extinguishers, thermal imagers, gas detectors. It has multiple radios for command post. It has vests for it to identify all the roles that are needed at a, at a building fire or an incident. You know, command vehicles nowadays are, are at the scene to be the, the incident command post for accountability. It also brings in the town manager, councilors. That's the place that we all rally when there's a situation that has to be discussed, which we've done before. It also does have some first aid kits. You know, so this is a universal vehicle that it, it functions for us every day as our office. We use this all the time. At any incident, it's the incident command structure set up for a fire incident or EMS incident. And it's usually generated and run out of the vehicle. The reason this is, so like I said, the 2013 was what we talked about, the, the first one, I mean, the one that we're replacing right now is, is being requested. We've had a great deal of change in our fire department operation. We've talked this over the years, several years, is that when we had a serious car wreck case, the ambulance would go out and would send the fire truck. The fire truck was getting some wear and tear, going through the calls. So we decided that we were going to start sending the service truck that we have, that you've probably all seen around town following the ambulance. The service truck is a, a, a grant vehicle that we got a few, that I got a few years back. It's a dual wheel, doesn't move very quickly. It doesn't get around town too much. And it does follow up the ambulance and other calls that need to be, you know, with extra staff instead of sending the fire truck down the road. We just had a road, the DPW parking lot just fell through the other day. I literally, a week before, had the ladder truck parked right in that exact spot, the brand ladder. So these trucks are heavy and the reason why, I'd like to take this 2013 vehicle, do a little rehab to it, keep it on the road for another three or four years. Stop using this service truck. The service truck is also getting beat. It's, it's not a real good functional vehicle for a swift and rapid response for the responders. So this vehicle will be, you know, like I said, repurposed. And Councilor McKee, you said repurposing vehicles. This is a perfect opportunity to move a vehicle in that's got some mileage on it. It can be used by our staff and it can be repurposed to do what the task that it needs to do right now. I think it's a good opportunity to do this. When I put this together, this was quoted out as a Tahoe, as you see in the picture. And Chief Woodson already, he already elaborated about the $5,000 reimbursement that we could get. Where we've actually calculated for just a little bit more money on top, we can get an F-150 hybrid. Same timeframe of delivery, same kind of idea, the five years, I mean, the $5,000 would come off the cost of that. It would be closer to $58,232. The reason I bring that to you now is that, and like Shane did too, also, Chief Woods also, is we just got final confirmation that that, that was, we were able to do that grant process and to get that $5,000 back per vehicle. The deputy does have a comparison of fuel costs. We have a calculator. And the differences between the Tahoe, the 150, and unfortunately, the 2013 Ford Expedition is, is, is still be used. Like I said, and that's what this, the purpose of the, of getting the new vehicles. So at this point right now, my, my request is to go with the 150, get the $5,000 back. And then repurpose the Ford Expedition to, to the guys so they can respond on emergency calls without taking the fire truck to heavy duty, you know, vehicles to, to a car accident, things like that. So that's a lot of information. I think the description's a little bit, my written description is, is a little bit more information that you might need and there's some more pictures in there. As we get through, through the other three items that we have in this year's budget, I'm open for any answers, questions or answers.
But the vehicle that you're replacing just needs some bodywork?
Needs, deputy, no longer.
It needs about $3,000 worth of bodywork. The suspension will actually be gone through because it's, it's actually 92,000 miles and there's about 4,700 hours on the vehicle. And then I've, I've noticed that the catalytic converter is clinking now, so that'll probably have to be done as well.
All right. Somebody else has questions on this side. I don't want to keep going.
You can go through all of them.
And the, the forest truck?
The, that has to be forest fire truck that we pushed and talked about so many times. All right, so tonight, the old one that we're, we have is a 1971 that we've pretty much built way back in the day. It's a standard shift. I think there's six or seven people that can drive the vehicle, including the deputy and myself. We're there during the day. So there's five other people within the family that can, can drive this vehicle, that old vehicle. Dierd, probably a lot of people's hearts. I know this video is going to be, is, is going to be airing, but we have a, I don't know how old the Willys is. There's a Willys Jeep, 53 Willys Jeep. And with this purchase, with this new forest fire truck, I want to roll in the Willys, the cost of the Willys and the money that we get for the Willys and this 71 towards the, the price of this new vehicle. That, that has happened before. We just bought the inspector's vehicle with some insurance proceeds that we had. We also had a return of some medical equipment. So we, we took the money out of the capital or stabilization where we got the money from. And then it went, the money when we received it from those things went back into the general fund. We, we do that a lot with the fire department stuff. It's, it's, you know, we try to find every option to replace vehicles to make sure that we have safe, adequate vehicles. The new vehicle is an F-450. And it's, it's, the pricing is right on, on your sheets right there. It has a skid unit in the back, which actually has hose and a little water tank and a foam tank and a pump. This is very similar to what I've proposed over the last couple of years. And that is the number that comes with it.
But I recall, Jason, at the PPP, you said you couldn't get firemen, firefighters to come back. And even if there was a forest fire, you wouldn't even have any to come back and run this truck to get it out to a fresh fire. That's what I recall you saying.
There are times when we don't have that coming back, but we still need to have safe vehicles that we can drive if there is an incident and we don't have to wait for someone from another town to come.
You have a lot of incidences with a brush truck?
A brush truck, brush, forest fire truck. Yes, we do.
All right.
Do we have any other questions? Assistant Ms. McLemmons.
Sure, I'll pay devil's advocate. About how many times a year do you think you need to use that vehicle?
So this is brush fire season. We've had four, five, probably five reported brush fires, a lot of illegal burns. So that brush fire does go to these illegal, people decide to stop burning, brushing their backyard without a permit. So they go over there and take care of those. Mulch fires, we have mulch fires. Mulch does spontaneous combust. That brush truck is a very nice vehicle to bring it, bring it through and put the fire out. And it, we do use that on very small incidents also. So it's just, just because it says brush forestry truck. It is kind of a universal vehicle. We do use it more often than, than everybody thinks.
And.
And there are some pretty nice pictures of the old vehicles in the back. So if we get down that road and we can sell them, brush trucks, that would be awesome.
So once again, though, if I can finish, I just have to find the information. Semi-custom. Semi-custom to fit in the building again. Semi-custom, for what reason? I'll say that and then before you answer that, I'm sorry. If you can't teach grown men to drive a standard, something is wrong. We may have to have a talk.
You come down and get and show them.
You don't give them an alternative. You want a job, you know how to drive the equipment. I could say that about the fire department and about the DPW department.
Point, point of clarification. They'll burn the clutch out and we don't know where the parts are going to come from, or if we could even get them.
Then train them right. I learned at 16, grown men should be able to do it.
Really? We have to. We could not get a license without getting, without doing, without a stack.
Just saying, that's, I wouldn't use that as a, as a reason for doing the truck. So could you, if you could just answer the semi-custom.
I guess.
Did I miss that?
So semi-custom and the fact that we're taking a, basically a fleet vehicle and adding the pump chassis to it.
Okay.
And that's the customized part of it. And we also have what they call a super single rear axle. So the truck would originally come as a dual wheeled vehicle. They take those off and they put larger off-road tires in its place.
Okay. And one, I think, final question, since you brought up the dual wheels. You mentioned the other vehicle that you've been using. Sorry, I, you mentioned that about that was a grant vehicle. That was a grant vehicle that you had to take that vehicle or that was a vehicle that you all picked? Because I thought I remembered.
The vehicle's original purpose, it was designed as a tow vehicle, the, the current service truck. And it's, the reason it's a regional homeland vehicle is because it was meant to tow the various trailers that we have, including the, the district has a safe trailer that has, that we've had in common many times with the fire prevention house and things like that. So it's meant, it's designed as a tow vehicle, not necessarily as a response vehicle. It does fill that role not well.
Okay, I guess I was just, because you're using that as an example of logic to get, to do what you needed to get here. It bothered me because you talked about it being a grant vehicle. So you had some sort of option when you purchased that as to what type of vehicle to get? I assume. And so you chose that. So I guess, just saying, right? Or did you have to take that vehicle?
Point of clarification, the, the vehicle, I actually put that grant together five, six years ago.
I remember, I remember when that happened, right? You couldn't remember that.
That was, that vehicle was, was purchased through Homeland for exactly what the deputy just said, to include the MCI trailer that we house. We also have an MDU that goes at the hospital. So that vehicle is, was tasked for that. It's not for, like, like he said, it's not for quick responses every single day in and out. It wasn't built to do those things.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear though, that people realize you've got a vehicle, because it sounded like you've got a vehicle on a grant that in the end wasn't for what it was. But now you've explained for what it was and why we have it, why we put it on our insurance rolls, so to speak, you know, and all that. Why we pay for it, maintenance and the, keep up a vehicle because we need it for something else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To spend the money.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the members? Seeing none? All right, we will go on to the next one. Under the DPW engineering, we will go to vehicles. Anybody have a question about vehicles for DPW? Councilor McKee.
So you are replacing quite a few vehicles here.
So there's quite a few vehicles listed there because we, about.
Well, there's four.
Five, six, seven years, we've been trying to do a rotation of our vehicles and every year, not all the vehicles that are on the rotation get pushed. So as you're seeing, this list is growing and growing and growing because even if you do a schedule of replacement, if you don't replace all the vehicles you're scheduling, then they get pushed from year to year to year. So if, I know that a certain number of these vehicles have been selected, so I, I don't, I, I guess you put them on the list. We don't ever expect that every single one of them will be funded, but obviously, we don't want to forget that they do need to be replaced because they're already at their useful lives and already at high miles.
So just going one at a time, the first one, is there something wrong with the truck that needs to be replaced or is it just another one of those?
I will tell you that probably every single one of those dump trucks, the big ones have broken down at various times and made them not useful for what they were actually scheduled to do. So we can keep on replacing and repairing 1987 Mack trucks and never get a new one and have it break and have it not be, be able to be used for half of the year and have it cost us tens of thousands of dollars trying to replace it and having our mechanics work on it, or we can decide that it's time to replace them.
Just a question through you, Matt, Jim, too. Didn't during plow season, oftentimes you'd give me updates during the course of the night and the plow trucks were breaking down?
Multiple times, we had multiple trucks break down. Even though we only had four storms, I think every storm we were losing. Big vehicles, small vehicles, every storm we were rotating out vehicles that we were losing. So that meant one more truck that normally was plowed in was off and we had to replace it with either a smaller vehicle or replace it with a backup which was even older and maybe not as reliable.
Do you have any more? You were going one by one. You were going one by one for your vehicles. Do you have any others you wanted to go through, councilor?
No, I guess not.
Okay. Right, citizen member Clemmons?
Alright, a couple of things. How do you make the determination of which vehicles you choose to put on the list for, for replacement in a given year?
So it's a combination of things. We're looking at the age, the miles, how many times it's been breaking down. I also consult with the crew to find out what they wanted to prioritize. I sent my priorities into the town manager in Karen, shaking your head.
I am. Okay, yeah. Alright, so age, miles, history, and crew, and then you've talked to obviously what? Okay. And, but, and each of these vehicles that are on this, they all pass inspection yearly anyway, right? I mean, we've managed to pass inspection and keep them on the road?
Yes.
Okay. And, what's the other thing I want to ask about that? I guess I would beg to differ on the evaluation. But, okay, that's all I got for now.
Well, I, I would like to follow up, though.
Counselor Katty?
So what you're saying is that you, you've got one, two, three, four vehicles here, and you're, you're saying every single one of them have all broken down?
Well, one of, the clamshell is not a vehicle. The clamshell is an additional piece of equipment for an existing truck to make sure, so that we can empty catch basins because we're having problems with our existing clamshell. The Oshkosh is forty-six, is one of our spreaders. It's a machine that we have, that we only use during big storms or for salting. We want to replace it with a more usable vehicle for salting and plowing because it's actually so oversized that we really, it's not a vehicle that is practical to be used on our roads the way we're doing them nowadays. So that's forty-six. The sweeper is actually replacing a part sweeper. So that's not, that's a nineteen ninety-six sweeper. It barely runs and we've actually been trying to get it up in operational all... It's, it's been down there since last fall and it's still not operational. We're still having problems. We have problems getting the parts now. We have problems getting it operational. So we only have one sweeper out right now because we don't have our second sweeper. Sweepers in the industry, they say they should be rotated out every seven years. Our new sweeper is older than that. So at some point, you're wasting your time and effort and money, and you're not getting the service that you want with a piece of equipment that's just sitting there. So it's time to replace it. And then you have your, and then we're asking about replacing two trucks that we have, number six and number nine, for one truck that can function that the two trucks don't. We're trying to basically get rid of two of our older trucks and get one truck that we can rely on.
Okay. I thought you said that they were broken down.
Well, they break down and we fix them. Because we still have to use them, we can't...
Just the two dump trucks?
Well, I, I don't have a list of all the breakdowns we had right here in front of me over the winter. But yes, these, these are two of our older trucks that we've been having problems with.
Okay.
Citizen member Clemmons?
So as a follow-up, and this has been discussed for years. And I was actually glad to see it when I went through the, all the equipment that was, that was listed in here. Clearly, you're not asking for all the equipment that's in here. But when you talk about the Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper, and we talk about not, have not yet been able to get reliable pricing for street sweeping services in order to estimate the cost difference. We have talked for years, or we did talk for years, or suggested, or whatever, comment made about, about doing just that. Other communities do that. Oh, I know we're a little different, but doesn't mean we can't do what other communities do occasionally too. And so we haven't been able to get. But certainly, other communities are getting this. So maybe, you know, that, that more emphasis needs to be put on that. Because I remember when we bought that one in two thousand eleven, or whatever the other sweeper, eleven, nine?
Eleven.
Eleven, right. And that was a big deal purchase, gonna last forever. And at the time, again, you had the old one breaking down, costing a lot of money. But when I do the math and you come up with how much a street sweeper costs in the years and all that, I don't know. Sometimes getting a service, who's gonna be responsible for the upkeep, the repair? Because I remember, actually, one of them, maybe it was the new one, it kept breaking down. We kept having trouble at one point with, with the service on, on something. I was very frustrated personally, hearing every time something was broken when it was purchased to not write down and not have to rent one or use something. So I guess I go back to the point. Why are we not putting more emphasis then on finding out what the cost could be on, on, on making somebody else do the job instead of us? So I don't know.
So most of, thank you.
Go ahead.
Most of the services that we were able to find and locations that we're able to find, either didn't want to give any more prices out because they already are too booked up or like a lot of the places that are using or have services are closer into Boston and didn't want to come out this far. So we really had a hard time finding it. At some point, you know, we had to move on and try to, basically, move on to doing other projects. So we did attempt to find it. And we can, I understand where you're coming from. I just, I don't know if you want to put up an RFP. That's basically the only way you're gonna get anybody to respond. We haven't gone that far. That even takes a lot of time and effort on our part, so, you know, to put that effort in, so.
Well, the cost of a street sweeper is...
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
But you had, you've had even your two thousand eleven now for ten years. It's thirty thousand dollars a year plus maintenance.
But I do, like I said, I do...
It's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So, and, but, but that's one. It's six hundred thousand for two. So again, you do the, how many men does it, you know, you require one man to drive each one? You know, how many, how many people does it take off, off the rolls? Because they're doing street sweeping instead of doing all those other projects? And I guess you have to look at it the whole thing.
It's three men when we're doing it with the two sweepers.
Right. So three men, two sweepers, you know, if you do the whole thing, even if it were the same, it might just be a better economies of scale not to have that liability of breakage, rentals, or replacements, whatever. Because nothing's guaranteed.
In my opinion, no matter what, you're always gonna need one sweeper just to be able to cover when you have those emergencies where something gets dumped or something gets happened. Also, you have to remember now, it used to be that we only had to sweep the roads once a year. Now technically, we're supposed to sweep the roads twice a year. So it is double the effort. So you're looking at two times contract services. Maybe you can handle a one-sweeping in the fall easier than having somebody come back in if you had a second, at least having one sweeper.
Well, nothing is, is, is beyond needing to know for sure when it comes to numbers and taxpayers' money. So I guess, I've, since we've said it for many years, but we just never gotten anything out of it. You know, it's like we really should find out what the cost could be. You know, what's the cost gonna be? We can guess at it, we can throw numbers around, but we just, no one's ever produced that. And it's kind of, it's hard to compare apples and apples when you're comparing apples and pears or something. Or apples and cherries.
It's hard to get prices when they know you're not really serious about actually working them a contract too.
I guess there's other ways to do it. I mean, I once called around to twenty towns and asked what their snow plowing was. I mean, I did my own thing. But I'm just saying, I asked what their overtime was. They were very helpful with telling me stuff. So I'm just saying, there, there's gotta be a way to know whether it could have worked for us. Because if it works for other communities. And maybe going out, what about the Springfield Way versus the Boston Way? I mean, there's, you know, we're in the middle of many opportunities, that's all. So just, it's my suggestion. I am a little concerned about continually spending money on street sweepers if it's something that should potentially send out. I could be wrong.
Alright, any other discussion on the vehicles? Counselor Steve, citizen member Shay?
Just a quick follow-up on what Clemmons was saying. Looking at the Elgin Pelican Sweeper, I know, I was curious why, you put down an estimated useful life of twenty years, but it's half that.
But that's not...
That's not the one. We're looking at the ninety-six one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I was curious, because that was also in the list of ones seeking to be replaced.
Yeah, but it's not being done yet. It's not being funded, so it's not being replaced yet. It's not even on the list.
Is that useful life? That is an incorrect useful life. It must have been a mistake on the form. Because that's not true. That's not true. There are only seven year useful life usually.
Both of them, both of them are good ones.
I, yeah, these are new forms too, Gus, so they probably, it was a mistake when it was just a copy.
That's seven years, so...
Do we have any other questions on the, on Ms. Shay?
Do you think it's going to be any grants or any help from the state for the change in the dealing with our sewer, with our catch basins?
We're talking about vehicles right now, Ms. Shay.
Right, but that's... Let me finish my sentence.
Go ahead.
That would, because now we have to sweep the streets because of the catch basin issue. Is the state going to give us any help that we might use towards buying a street sweeper? Hopefully, but not likely?
It's very unlikely, yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I suppose there could be some special grants that you try to go out, but these requirements are basically for the majority of the communities in the state of Massachusetts. So if, I don't see them, this is not, they don't consider this a new requirement.
No.
Any other further questions on these vehicles? Seeing none. Streets, sidewalks, and drainage. Any questions here? Councilor Katty?
Question three, the tip construction phase for Hook and Hamilton Street. That's, that's like been on the list now for what, ten, twenty years now?
Well, we got on the tip about four years ago. And so we are getting, we're scheduled for 2023. That is why this phase of the project is coming up, because this is for the right-of-way acquisition. You can't do the right-of-way acquisition until it's a year before the project is actually scheduled to be on the tip. So we are reaching that, and that's why next year you will need to be able to start doing your right-of-way acquisition for your tip project, so that it will be ready to go when it gets advertised.
And, and what about the Hamilton Street?
That's, that's the whole project. It's the Hamilton, it's the whole rotary tip project is, it's all one project.
Alright.
Okay?
Counselor Steve?
Yeah, how much, how much do you actually think we're gonna need as far as land acquisition?
Well, it's, it's actually not that bad as far as the pieces that we have, but it's until you get into the right-of-way, right... That, that is all shown on those right-of-way plans that we're out. There's some temporary ones, even those you have to use that right-of-way process. So it's all the little temporary ones, because even if you're, when you're doing state jobs, even if you're very, doing a sidewalk next to somebody's property, you get a temporary. So if, there's multiple ones, it's, it's gonna be a process. You know, when, when that process starts, the community, there's definitely ways to mitigate the cost of those things where, if people are willing to donate for, instead of in lieu of the easements and things of that nature. So hopefully, we don't know, this is a budgetary estimate that the engineers provided.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Move on to combined water, sewer, drainage, and paving projects. Any questions or comments on this one? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Chair, I'm just, to give you a heads up. This is where I may have misinterpreted some of the funding codes. And also, we had thought about ARPA. You'll see in the left-hand column with the description. I copied in some of the descriptions from what Ms. Blakely provided. And I, we were contemplating ARPA at that time. The codes don't necessarily reflect that. One of them does have it be West Street. So I know Ms. Blakely and Ms. Harless and I did go over this and we have a better funding breakdown, but these have multiple funding sources. But some of the funds have requested may, in light of the new ADHOC, ARPA committee, may require us to bond these next three, if I'm saying that correctly.
Yes, or, or some variation of theirs.
Right. Depending upon what the, the ultimate decision of the ADHOC committee and the council is relative to the remaining three point six million dollars of ARPA funds. If a lot more goes to community needs, then we may have to balance what we would like to use for infrastructure versus bonding. So the number isn't clear at this moment. That's all.
And I also would like to just pass out, because we realized that we somehow mistakenly, we didn't include Crane and River in our sheets. So I, we have made copies to add to your binders. And there's actually additional backup of yard and crane and river here. I thought you had it. Yes, but it's not, there's not a, there's not one of these. Every one of those has one of these associated, so that's the mention. So if you wanted to just add that to the back of the binder?
Thank you. Alright. Do we have questions, comments from members of the committee? So none? Okay. Well, it looks like the next section we actually have any funding in is actually under water. Because everything else doesn't look like it was funded for this year. So, unless there's any further discussion, we'll move on to that? Alright. So water, any questions or comments on the water capital budget?
So I just do have one comment.
Yep.
I think that this is another one of those situations where we thought we were gonna have ARPA funds. So I think that two, where you see the two first quotes that say L, I think those projects are gonna probably either be waited until the ARPA is decided or, you know, or taken on.
Alright.
So it really is just the two, let's say H, that is contained earnings, which is the polymer effestation and the engineering for that.
Is there a way we can get a clean copy of this with all the corrections made? Or some of the corrections made before it goes up for the final council vote for budget? Because there's a lot of things that are being discussed and changed about this coding, so.
We just got page...
I know, that page alone, we had a lot. Alright.
My only question would be the, the downtown water main project, that's East Main, East Main Street?
Where, 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 where?
Water.
Oh, well, that was, I think that was Main's... I have to go and look and see.
And the Dennison Hill Water Main Project, is that going to include some roadwork, I would imagine?
Well, any water main project that we would do would obviously include some roadwork.
Which is good, because it means it... But the downtown water main project, we just finished downtown, so you may be...
I thought it might be Lower Main Street. It might be a duplicate of the Lower Main Street one, but I'm trying to find where the actual sheet is. Too many sheets.
It says to get...
Oh, this is the gaps in between, I'm sorry. So this is to fill the gaps in between Main Street and where the tip projects are going. So there's Foster Street, Central Street, and Hamilton Street are gonna, each have little sections on them that aren't getting upgraded in either one of the projects. And to fill in the two gaps between and make, put new water mains in there and to get the roads re-done in there, that was what that project is. Yeah, not what I found, sorry.
How's that?
Which I do think is a very valuable project for you guys to think about and consider in the future because you're gonna have these three little roads with these three little segments in between them. And there might be some way you can even incorporate them into the tip. The state probably won't pay for them, but you may be able to do them as part of the project if you had funding for them.
Any other questions about water? Seeing none, we'll move on to sewer. Do we have any questions or comments about sewer?
It stinks.
I agree.
You can do nothing about that down there, right?
Well, so you can see here that it does say that it's bonded, but I would say that... I guess it's up to the council to decide if they want to go out for the complete bonding of that at this time or not. But I would caution that you have a lot of projects already going on with a new director coming in that you might want to also temporarily let them get up to speed before you, you put additional projects on their plate.
Any other questions about sewer, comments? Seeing none? The next section with actually any funding is the community center. Because everything else was not funded, from what it seems like in fiscal year twenty-three.
You just had one thing about that.
Okay. About the community center? Okay.
I thought we were going to use CBBG money on the community center. I thought that was in the works for possibly the next round of CBBG fund.
I never heard that.
This, this Dean might be able to...
CBBG fund at the community center?
CDVG fund at the community center?
I thought that was in the works, we were planning.
Yeah, I was, I, I think you advocated for funding to go to the community center at a future public hearing.
Right.
We haven't gone for public hearing for the next potential grant projects yet.
That's right.
That's how much of a tale there is on this one.
All right. I thought we were just keeping that open and possibly and possibly using CDVG money for the community center for the next round, because we've used a lot of it on Under Street Field and Skateboard Park, and so we were setting it up for next time, because we want to spread it around a little bit. We would use it for the community center and West Street, uh, Moore Street Field, so. Thank you, that's all.
Yes, Ms. Dean?
Yeah, uh, just to give you a little teaser about the CDVG timeline, just to not create any false expectations. Because we were also slammed with all of the grant money out there and the projects that were inundated with. CDVG is looking at a two-year grant cycle. Uh, that would be later than what traditionally would have started this coming January. So it will be further out, maybe a year and a half from now, and it would be a larger chunk of money. Uh, so we'll have longer to think and plan, bring those ideas to the public hearing, please.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Clements?
Thank you. Um, the replace upper windows, exit doors flashing and caulking. Has anybody, because I was involved with the replacement of all the lower window doors in the senior center, uh, windows, excuse me, um, to which all the caulking turned out to have asbestos. Um, and that became a whole nother animal.
Yeah, that's, that, that has been brought to my attention.
Okay, so has that been tested, since you're gonna, you're talking about doing those upper windows, the, for the plexies?
Correct. It has not been yet.
Okay.
Um, that's going to be part of the cost going forward. But they definitely need to be replaced. Prior, uh, before the windows, though, I'm more concerned with the exterior doors, because with the use that they got during the vaccine clinic, they're not closing properly. They're secure, but they're, they're really loose, and, um, just security-wise, especially, um, they really need to be replaced.
Okay, because it was used as the, um, for the, the center, um, you know, the COVID crisis center, the vaccinations internal, could not, maybe there be some sort of, could we not use money from something else to fix that?
Well, I am going to bring facilities forward to ARPA as well.
Just curies? Right.
When we had our ARPA meeting, I did mention these things.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Good to know, all right. But I would certainly, I would caution you, you know, you've got a number there that's replace upper windows and, and the flashing and the caulking, and I would just caution you because, you know, we were disposing of windows, then instead we were abating and disposing, and it's a simple test.
Right.
You know, we had, um, um, G's Engineering Environmental came in and did the test from Charlton, he was great. And then we lucked out because we had some, um, Casella helped us out with getting rid of the asbestos, uh, windows. So, uh, and, but it had to be done properly, it had to be all, you know, and that was one room, that wasn't the, the big room, so I'm just saying.
That's why I had put in a higher amount there.
Yeah.
Correg up for the windows themselves was, um, 70,000. But, um, I was speaking with Heather, she said that we would need to get the abatement done, and she suggested that we go at least double that, so I went to 150. Then that's why I had priced it.
150, what?
That's.
No, it's at 115.
This is wrong, because we got.
Oh, oh, but on my, my, oh, wait a minute.
Okay, we're right in there.
That was the prior, um, year here. I don't know why my thing's going to get changed over, but, um.
Yeah, because it says 115.
115, so we're back at that issue.
Okay. Well, 115.
So you're saying it's 150 now?
Well, yes, it's going to be like 150.
Is that?
Again, that's an asset, that's a.
Were you understanding, was that the understanding, Mr. Manager?
Definitely.
Some, you know about that?
May have been a typo on the paper.
150, 150.
Use the question. All right. Uh, okay, that's, um, okay.
Do you have any other questions or?
Well, no, well, the simple thing is to first just get the, get the little sample test, and then you'll know for sure.
Right.
It might be that they're old, that they're newer, and that it was after the fact, it might not have been as old as the original crane windows that got redone, so.
I believe they're original windows, so they probably do have asbestos.
Yeah. And we only had the issue in that main room anyway, not in the side room, so that was good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the community center? Seeing none, we move on to cable. We have one replacement field cameras. That's it. Do we have any questions or comments on that?
Just always pointing out, I'm sure that the money comes out of the ratepayers, not out of the taxpayers. So you might be one in both, you might obviously be a taxpayer here in Southbridge and subscribe to cable. But the, the cable funding is through the ratepayers.
All right.
Yeah, I think we might, we actually may make a change on that.
Oh, okay.
Because we're running into an issue with our graphics system, I've mentioned it to Karen. We're having more of a problem with that and a need to possibly replace that than we are, will have a need to replace the field cameras. That system is, I don't know if you've noticed at the beginning of meetings, sometimes the wrong signal, the wrong information flashes at the beginning of the meeting. It's, it's an older system, it was, at the time that the, uh, control room was upgraded about five or six years ago, that was still viable, and they decided to keep that system. But now it's starting to go, and as I said, especially at the beginning of meetings, it tends to want to act up for some reason. So it's probably going to have to be replaced, so we may go with that replacing that, and it would actually be cheaper than the amount that was quoted. You know, for the cameras, the system that we were quoted is possibly replacing the switcher, you know, the switcher which puts the images on the screen and the graphics combination. And I was told that might run about 13, 12, 13 thousand.
So that would be instead of replacing the field cameras, is what you're saying. Is that instead of, or in addition?
Instead of, yes.
So it's instead of, okay.
Yeah, because it's a more immediate need, it's starting, as you said, at the beginning of the meet, you'll only see it. Puts the wrong graphics up occasionally.
So Jim, would you not prefer to leave, leave the number, not knowing that you don't have a quote, official quote yet, but also what about replacing part of the field cameras? You know, not all of them, just replace a few or something. I mean, you have the money in, you have the money in it, so.
Yeah, we may actually do that.
This is first I've heard of that.
Replace one or two field cameras, because some of those are getting, are aging out as well.
Can we have an updated, um, um, information sheet for the meeting then, on that as well, because that's a big change, and I want everybody to be informed. Thank you.
Yeah, we, Lynn and I could possibly work on that next week and get a more accurate amount for that. Because as I said, this latest problem has been really cropping up, and we'd like to get, get to that maybe in the, you know, when we can, replacing that system. And as, you know, Denise has said, maybe a field camera or two, because those are getting a little old, so. We're going to start using them more, because we you know, we may, we have a new person coming on, so hopefully you'll get more use, right?
Yes.
All right. All right, um, any other questions or comments about cable? Seeing none, we will move on to the next section, which is site conditions, but those, then those are all funded through state and federal aid. Any questions or comments about those? Under the school section, site conditions. No? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to building conditions. Again, there's only, it looks like only one thing, and it looks like it's being funded through federal and state aid. Any questions? Seeing none?
Actually, I do have.
Oh, you do? Okay, Councilor Steves?
Talking about doing these roofing projects here. Um, weren't we also talking about much bigger roofing repairs that need to be done as part of their, their capital master plan?
Yes, but they, I believe if I remember correctly, they stated that they're going to be putting that as part of, because they got a huge increase in general. Um, in Chapter 78, they'll be putting it in as part of that, instead of coming to the town and asking for it.
Right, yeah, I knew that.
Mist of large of the presentation from the Southwishes Partnership last night, and he had his slides, so. I got the impression that there was a large chunk coming to this town, which is, they're asking.
Yeah, the increase in Chapter 78, there was such a huge one.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure I was understanding it, right.
There was such a huge increase, there was a, there was extra money left over after net, you know, spending, and they're using that increase of Chapter 70 to fund these capital repairs instead of coming to the town again.
Right.
All right.
And I believe he's also looking to do a master plan, so that he can do an SBA project to get the maximum amount of reimbursement on those.
But they are coming to, he talked about coming to the council for the vote on all that, because you still have to, to buy into the whole plan, right? Okay.
Any, any other question? Oh, yeah, no, it was a great presentation, I was quite impressed this year. All right, any other questions about building conditions? Seeing none, we move on to building elements. Again, there's only, it looks like only one thing here, and it's funded through state and federal aid, and that is the A-track upgrades and recommissioning for fiscal systems. Any questions about that? All right, seeing none. That concludes all the things that have been identified as being funded for this fiscal year. Are we okay with moving that up to council as presented?
Well, I would just like to, one question. So, what exactly is the bottom line issue?
Yeah, there's no bottom.
Strange budget, I'm sorry.
Because it says 1.7, 1, 1.75 million, but we didn't fund the full 1.75 million.
No, that's under school.
That's a school.
That's school.
No, that's just a school, so it's 27, yeah.
There is no total.
27 million would have been the total request for this year.
Yeah.
The actual total funding by source is the 19 million for the combined water, sewer, school.
Oh, we're at the bottom, we're at the bottom, the grand total section.
But we're going to have to make some minor changes to the things that we mentioned tonight, but it's roughly the one point, and the 19.13 million, subject to the minor amendments like, um, Ms. Havics, they have to fix that 115, and then I have to remove some of those ARPA-related things, so it should not be to exceed that amount, it would probably be reduced. I, I'm just eyeballing, I think we'd be taking a million or two off from the ARPA request. But what I will endeavor to do is make the corrections that you asked for, Madam Chair, to clean it up and send it back to the.
Yeah, because I think, I, I think I get what you're asking, you're asking, it, it could all be incorporated under A, property tax, free cash, and overlay surplus.
Right, a lot of people, that's usually what they'll say, how much is coming out of the free?
So it'd be 1.9 roughly coming out of either.
Out of, we would be using it on free cash or stabilization, those types of sources, yes.
Are you going to do the stabilization? What is the free cash stabilization part of here, or you want to go?
Yeah, there doesn't have that in. Where we put money in.
I'm integrating your, you know, I, I, I do, I put, um, we're incorporating as many of the ideas that we talked about as possible, but I do, I do have a, a line over there. I have a code for it, but we didn't do it yet, but I reserve space for it.
Yeah, we went over one and two, and there was no upgrade. We went through every single thing, every section that had up, actual funded.
No, you, we talked about that, I said that the odor control is the big one that you're saying, $5 million, and if you wanted to not to wait on that, that's your big ticket, you know, everybody wants odor control, but it's.
Water sewer bond is 8.7 million.
And that's the water sewer bond, that line, water sewer bond.
So that you don't have bad smell every once and every once, that's ridiculous. That's not a smell.
It's very expensive.
It's annoying, but it's, it's really.
Right, and it doesn't even smell every day, it doesn't even smell every week, it doesn't even smell, you know. It smells in, it smells in milbury when I stop at the whites. Get out of there.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, uh, under the ARPA total, I have 1.5 million, so that number may need to be changed downward to take out the projects that, um, Ms. Blakely and I had talked about, where we, we had initially put the placeholder for ARPA and that's subject to change, because she was talking about taking those two out of water, I think, with the, the 90,000.
So West Street, we had 250,000. I, I think we need to put a detailed presentation of where the funding sources are going to come from, one of those projects. And, um, try to talk through it, because I don't think that it's feasible for you just to take it all out of all your water and sewer, you might want to tap some of your ARPA funds, just so that you can keep your rates down.
So we will work on this in a semi amended form.
Can you make sure, um, all of the subcommittee members as well get the updated amended capital budget as well?
Thanks.
Um. Do you have any missed comments?
Well, no, I, I'm still trying to digest this, this format, which is very professional and very, you know, pushes things out, and it's definitely much more than blank years, which we were used to. However, it just doesn't do that thing where we talk about, well, you say you're going to talk, you can do the detailed presentation at some point of how you're funding certain things, usually it's where we have to bond that, we have to do that, we have to, you know, or here's all the free cash numbers, and that's it.
Isn't that what A is?
It is, I know, I circled them all, but there's no, not, there's no real, I mean, yes, it's, it looks like 1.9 if the numbers are right, but we have a bunch of discrepancies, or a few discrepancies, I won't say a bunch. So it's just like, it's hard to get the bottom line in this, in this format. Just saying, it's, after, after looking at them for 12 years, some really bad ones, some which made no sense for five years. It's just like, it's odd, it's just odd, it's odd. But anyway, okay, I guess, I mean, because when you're checking about the capital projects, the town wants to know, the taxpayers want to know how we're funding, if we're going to have to bond something or take, you know, get funding for it, then they need to know that that's part of our debt, you know, going forward. It's just hard, it just didn't seem like we were talking about that.
The general fund farm is not, there is none, that's why we didn't talk about it, there was none put forward for this year.
Right, but we have these road projects and all that aren't all being taken care of by. Anyway, it's okay, no big deal, it's for me to extract and understand.
Any other, Mr. Manager?
I'll renew the same, uh, comment that I made earlier when we talked about the positions. If anybody wants to mail, email suggestions, you know, there's, maybe we should limit it to council and, uh, citizen subcommittee members about the formats, and then we can have a discussion, um, and maybe we still continue to meet with our, uh, ad hoc capital planning to discuss how to improve this going forward. But again, this, um, incorporate a lot of the discussion we had in this ad hoc committee, and I, I ran a rough draft of this to Councilor Marquetti, so try to incorporate what we discussed, and like I said, first pass, we can always improve.
I think it's a vast improvement from what we were getting previously, a vast improvement.
Bigger font, any, just fill the page at least.
This is, this is a very hard committee to please, just know.
I haven't heard shooters in years.
I had to fill mine up until 11 by 17, that's.
You know, that's what I would love, this part, did you go, no, Kevin did it too.
All right.
Well, the, my, my thought process is trying to get on one sheet of paper, so they.
No, I know, I understand, yeah. No, no, I get it, it's very easy, nothing's easy, it's just, it's like, oops.
Councilor Steves?
Yes, just a quick suggestion, is it maybe with this, all this.
If it's, is it a suggestion, they could be sent by email or?
It could be, but. Because I may forget to say it, because it's. It is, take a second. Um, is it, instead of, with, with this document, maybe we could just have a cover sheet that just breaks down which, which funding source are the ones that you're actually seeking funding for. Like a single page that lists all the As, all the Bs, all the Cs, whatever, just all in one place, in type font that we can actually read.
I actually, I would disagree with that, just because I like being able, if you do that, we won't be able to look.
And you keep all of the rest of it here. We keep everything else in here, but the.
But you just want an additional document?
For this, for this, for the first year, for the first year, the summary page.
A filter, you can filter.
Yeah, you can filter it out.
A summary page.
For the first year.
Yes, just for generals. If somebody says to you, hey, what did you spend on free cash, because that's what everybody else says, there it is.
Okay, no, that's good.
But for everybody else who needs six years, there it is.
All right, so we have any further discussion on the capital budget for fiscal year 23 as presented? We do have a motion in a second to recommend this to council. All those in favor?
I have bullish on that street saver.
Fair. All those opposed? unanimous of all present, we're on the last agenda item, adjournment.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Long discussion, long discussion.
Good night, everybody, meeting is adjourned.